This is the Bluff Town Council Regular Meeting. Today is September 12th, 2023. Roll call.
Linda Sosa.
Jim Sayers.
Luann Hook.
Brant Murray.
Ann Lepinen.
Erin Nelson, serving as Town Manager.
So this is the public comment period. Erin, were there hands raised for public comment?
Oh, we just got one. Dan Myers.
Okay. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Thank you. So I wanted to address the August 22nd meeting. Were you all updated on the Playground Committee? We had made, we had kind of had some discussions that we wanted to have an update. And so I know that was put on the agenda, but we missed it. We didn't know it was on that agenda. So I had requests from Erin to put it on the April or the August 30th agenda. And that's when we found out it had already been talked about. So first, we want to apologize for missing that and hope that's not any kind of indication of our, our level of interest in doing this. You know, we're still highly interested in getting money invested in starting to develop our parks and playgrounds. We're not, you know, fully set on it being one place, but I think what we are set on is that these investments start to happen. You know, it's the travel, our travel is a lot different now that we have the three-year-old and one-year-old. Every town that we go into, we see, we go and visit their parks, there's flashpads. It really changes everything. We've kind of learned that these parks are really the, the heart of a town. You know, people gather there, tourists often stop there, and that's their main place to go, especially if they have kids like us. And I'm afraid if people came to our parks and playgrounds right now, that, you know, we barely have a pulse. Yeah, there's, there's some pub, we have great public space, so sometimes I think that, that makes us overlook the value of, of having internal space in parks and playgrounds. And so we're really hoping that there was initial investment that was there. And we discussed some numbers. That's why we were, uh, you know, starting to have the meetings with Playground Planners and actually looking at some stuff that we could start building out. And so we heard the discussion on the 22nd. It was disappointing. I know it was kind of tied to the CCC and I understand logically, you know, why we should prioritize and do one thing before the other. But at the same time, we're already doing activities there. We're going to give a, the Community Foundation is doing an update tomorrow. Hope everyone's able to join about recycling. And so that's one thing we're doing in that space already. And so we hope that this, uh, this can be kept on the forefront. I know that this was rated high in the Improved Livability Section when we were talking about strategic planning. And I know we talked about 2024 is when we were going to create our plan, 2026 is when we hope to implement it. But, you know, really, we were hoping to have some initial investments to start moving things forward and so that the money is there so we can work on grants and some of that. And I know during the Town Council call that that's where some of it went, is that we wanted to work on grants. And while I agree with that, I still think there's responsibility by our town and the money that we have there to start making investments in our infrastructure. And we're happy to support with as much as we can with grants, uh, working with other than nonprofits to try to get this stuff going. But just, you know, sharing that this is a really high priority to us. And I know we've talked about actions coming out of strategic planning that we could start, um, doing this next committee to get that going. And just want to raise my hand and say I'm willing to help with that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Were there any other public comments, Erin?
No, I don't see anyone else.
Just very quickly, uh, to the Playground Committee, uh, I am renowned for getting somebody onto the agenda because it's on my list and failing to communicate that to the person that I've put on. So I apologize. That oversight is not yours. It is mine. So thank you. All right, then we'll move to number one, which is a report on the Bluff Fort fundraiser.
A minute.
Oh, see now, when I throw myself off like that. I, okay, approval of the Bluff Town Council Regular Meeting minutes of September 5th, 2023. Has everybody received them? Have you read them and are there any changes?
Motion to approve.
Second, Mayor.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Aye. Anyone opposed? It's unanimous. All right, now we'll go to number one, which is a report on the Bluff Fort fundraiser for the Bluff Volunteer Fire Department. The tally, well, first of all, we had 131 people participate. And I probably missed a few as they were coming in. At one point, there were quite a few people lined up. And in that, we raised, as of September 9th, at the close of the day, $5,960.50. However, after that, we received a couple of other donations. So it's closing in on 6,000, most likely will go over sixes. There were a couple of people who were mailing in donations. That money was counted by Lynda and myself twice together and then counted again by myself and one other person. And then it was take, the cash box was taken to the office and Kathy Carson counted it with Chief Lot. And other than the fact that we were $100 off, I was $100 off because I left my check at home in the copier. So I have mailed that check off to them. So we are somewhere around $5,900 plus dollars. It was really successful. Food was great, weather was great, and we got to watch the volunteers participate because we had a, a call at the end of 10:10, which was a fine call because it was nothing serious. So anybody want to add to that or talk about it?
Fantastic event. Thanks, thanks for the effort and all the folks that were able to work.
So if there's nothing further, we'll move to number two, which is discussion and vote to approve the letter to Congressman Curtis detailing our request. Did everyone receive that? And are there any comments, any discussion? Luann?
Uh, the only thing I might just as a, number five, it talks about Silas. He's no longer with the BLM. So maybe just keep it a little more generalized.
Okay, I'll take a look at that. When did he leave?
Just like in this last week or so, so.
Yeah, the last conversation I had with the River Trail, which was the middle of last week, I believe. He was mentioned, so thanks for the update.
Yeah, it's, it's pretty, he'll still be in the area, but has switched jobs. But, so I think just, I don't know, do what you like. I mean, he was working on it, so.
Well, actually, I'm, I'm going to leave it in because the information I had was that he drafted the, um, the easements and the, the easements are sitting on Jake Palmer's desk as of last week. So I think it's, it's a accurate picture of what happened.
He would, he would probably still, um, you know, jump in if, if they had questions for him regarding all of that, so.
Okay. All right, so anybody else? So can I get a motion?
Uh, motion to approve the letter.
And I'll second that, Mayor.
All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? It's unanimous. Number three, the discussion and vote on lifting the fire restrictions. We had this on last week and we decided to leave the fire restrictions in place until we discussed it again this week. Anybody have a thought?
I'll make a motion.
Yeah, I'm actually going to go ahead and lift them. We had a nice rain today and temperatures are cooling, so I'll second Jim's motion.
And I agree too, the, the winds, the, all those concerns from when we put it on originally, those are all gone now. It's, uh, they still have to get a permit to do open burning, that you can do a fire pit and run your chainsaw and that kind of stuff without permits and worry, well, still need to worry, but you, it's a, don't have to ban them.
Then, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? It's unanimous. So Brant, that means that if you can work with Malia about getting that cutting down the, the buildings, great.
We'll, we'll get, get back to work on it.
Then there's a little bit of an update on Bluff selection, which is November 21st, 2023, and a little bit more information on the canvassing. Why don't I go ahead and ask Erin to update what she knows at this point?
So we were coordinating with Lyman Duncan, um, as they do, they will be holding early voting in Bluff. So, um, we're still waiting for the final draft, but he released a rough draft of what is going to be shared. So, um, I'll just kind of read this off to you. So the general election will be held on November 21st to determine the Town Council seat for Bluff, two seats. Um, they will, the county will host a satellite office at the Bluff Community Center on Thursdays starting on October 26th for four weeks. So October 26th, November 2nd, November 9th, and November 16th from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. And then the services that they're going to be offering are Navajo, Navajo language assistance, drop off voted ballots, um, for, for, he's got the word funny here, but essentially mail-in ballots, you can drop them off. You can register to vote or update your voter registration. You can obtain a replacement ballot and find out where polling locations will actually be on Election Day. And then they've got some contact information on this little flyer. Additional satellite offices are located at Blaming City Hall, uh, the County Building in Monticello. Um, and they've got other days of the week that they're scheduled, but we're targeting Thursdays from 10 to 2. And then as a reminder, we will have a, um, drop off location in the town offices. We'll figure out the exact location from, um, that same week in October through Monday just before Election Day. So that is my update. Ann?
So the canvassing, according to what I read, um, in the legal notices from the state, would be between November 28th and December 5th. I'm still trying to get a response from the county on how we get trained to do that, but I believe that we'll need at least three elected officials, um, at that point. And we can identify the date that we're going to do it when we get a little more information on the training, because right now, I'm just making assumptions as to what we need to do. I do know it's between November 28th and December 5th. So if anyone knows, any of the council know that you're going to be out of town for that entire time or during that time, let me know. I think I'm coming back on the 28th, um, from Thanksgiving, but I'll be here the rest of it.
Mayor, um, I'll be leaving around that time, maybe the 29th or something, um, and be gone for a couple of weeks. So, um, it'd be good if we could do it on the 28th, if I'm, if I need to be included or I'll try to postpone my trip, so we'll figure it out.
Yes, so we can talk about it as soon as I get the details on the canvassing and the numbers of us. I think we only have to have a quorum. I don't believe we all have to be here, but again, I'm making some assumptions. Any questions? And then we talked, um, Erin and I talked with Jen Davila, um, on the solar eclipse issues. And one of the things that we've thought about on our way back from Salt Lake City is doing some flyers to put in people's mailboxes to make sure that they've got all the voting information, because most people are going to think we vote on that Tuesday, the first Tuesday of the month. And so we, we're thinking we should put out a flyer that we have, uh, the poster, uh, postmaster put in everybody's box along with some other information about updates. But I really feel, I think we all feel strongly voting is important and we want to make sure that folks don't miss it or think that, um, they're supposed to go somewhere to vote and there's nothing there on the, the date it normally would be. Then if there's nothing else on that, then number five, update on the design review team for the Cooperative Cultural Centers meeting today. Jim?
Uh, it was a pretty short meeting today, thank you. And we just had really two points that we discussed. One, and the, uh, one was the division of the 50/50 and everybody seemed to be okay with that. And, um, I guess I got my question answered, so thank you, Erin, for that. And, um, the other, of course, was the bid for the ceiling. And, uh, the, it seems to be a, a feeling, a very strong feeling that, um, the getting out of contract for time and materials would be best, um, among the two UDB representatives. I really think that a contract that allows for some contingency of, you know, if the workers discover something that is going to take more time, we can probably put together a contract like that and it'll be just fine. Erin is, uh, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Erin, but I think you're in favor of the contract, um, direction, not the time and materials. And, uh, and I, and I concur. I mean, if you get time and materials, you're really going to have, have to have somebody that's kind of watching over everything to some extent, uh, and we just don't have the time to do that. But I think we can get the same result with a, with a little, with a clause or two in the, in the, in a contract. But correct me if I'm wrong, but that's about it for today. And, um, uh, was there something we were going to discuss next week, Erin? I can't, um, I thought there was something that was on.
Just drafting up a, the next for the ceiling removal, yeah.
Yeah, we talked about the signage too. And, uh, Damian is going to look into the P&amp;Z sign ordinance, which ought to take up some of his time. That's about it.
Brant?
Yes, Brant.
Um, I was just thinking, you know, Danny brought up the, the playground question. And a, a week or so ago, I mentioned the placement of it. So it might be, it might be, um, it might behoove us all to, to kind of create, to figure out how big a place they need the playground size-wise, you know, is it a, is it 50 by whatever? And that way started, we need to start thinking about where to put it. Again, I'm worried about having it by the highway and if other people aren't, then we'll talk about that. But, so maybe we could reach out and try, and try to get from the Playground Committee the size of space they need for concept.
Yeah, well, sure. I think there, the playground has possibilities other than CCC, but, um, you know, some planning that's, I'd be looking for it. That'd be great, actually.
If we can kind of get an idea of how big it, it potentially could be, I think it would help.
Well, I think there are a couple of things. One is that this would fall within the strategic planning and kind of looking at what we're doing. And number two, did you talk at all about getting both groups together in the same space to talk about some of this stuff? We have been asking UDB since, I would say midsummer, early summer, to please assemble a team, tell us when they can be here. And we don't get anything until they're already in town or arriving the night before. Some of these decisions that are getting made, um, while I appreciate Dave Conine and Damian Ballerman, I don't know that they have authority to say what the, what the board wants. They're not on the board, neither one of them. Now, Woody isn't, Woody Lee's not coming to the meetings or at least hasn't been to the last few. So Jim, can you get that on the agenda to say it would be really useful to get us all in the same place to talk?
I'd be, I'd be delighted.
And then will you get them to commit to it?
Well, you know, um, can I get someone to commit to something?
Yes, answer is yes.
Well, if they commit to it, uh, the answer is yes, but if they don't, I, what am I, I don't really have a, any power or a lever. But, um, it's, it's cool though. Um, yes, I'll get, and we'll discuss that.
Okay, thank you.
They are in the throes of trying to find a, somebody to do their books for them, that they have to have. So I think that for right now, until they get someone to, there's not going to be anything else going on, but we'll see. I've got it on my, in my memory here. Thank you. Any other questions?
Okay, then if not, we'll move to number six, is a report on the joint work session today with Planning and Zoning Commissioners and the Town Council. Uh, was somebody want to take a stab at that?
Um, I'll always talk, Mayor, you know me. I thought we had a good work session. We discussed the, um, proposed ordinance, uh, that Chris had sent back to us. There was good conversation about whether or not have conditional use and allow, um, you know, flight activity in A1 and A2. So I thought it was a good conversation.
Yeah.
Anyone else? So one of the things that we talked about was having Chris McAnany come in and talk to both Planning and Zoning and the Town Council about conditional uses or answer any questions about the language in the drafted, um, ordinance. The ordinance that our attorney handed off to us was worked on by Planning and Zoning and they made some changes, including, uh, changing airport to airstrip and some other things. Amanda Podmore is going to put together the, uh, changes and send it to us. And I am going to talk with Chris and identify a couple of, um, times that he might be able to come in virtually and answer questions and explain, like what does conditional use look like? Is he in favor of us having it or is it in there as an alternative for us to talk about? The other thing is that in looking at, um, this, it's, it's pretty clear to me that we'll need between the disconnect, uh, voting and the, um, aviation ordinance, we probably need to have an executive session. So I'm trying to narrow down some dates and times to get the work session, have Chris come in, maybe do a, a executive session and then be able to move these two items along. So I'll be sending, um, out some information after I talk with Chris, hopefully tomorrow, but sometime this week. You need?
As I understand it, correct me if I'm wrong, I kind of have been thinking about that session today and, um, some things that I think I learned. And one is that we cannot relegate all the aviation activities to the airport because the airport is sort of in a limbo with BLM. Is that, is that what I heard today?
Okay, so because the, because we will have a lease if we approve it, um, with the BLM and because it's on BLM land and it's within the Bears Ears National Monument, it is within the Bears Ears Management Plan. And our lease, as it has said previously, is for recreational use. That's my phrase. I'm not sure exactly what the lease says, but not commercial, which changes it. And so if we wanted to sign a new lease and we wanted to begin exploring commercial, we most likely would be restricted by the management plan unless BLM issues an exception. And then there's a process for both requesting an exception from the BLM and then working with all the powers that be to govern air traffic.
But for right now, we cannot simply designate aviation activities to the airport because we don't know the outcome of the BLM management plan. Is that correct?
Okay, what we can say is that that's, that would be a, an area that we would want traffic at. But from a practical view, no, we wouldn't be able to say that we can approve it because we don't have all those permits in place. Which is kind of straining at nats, but we can say that that would be a zone. We could approve that, but we, but we would not be able to issue, uh, permission to people because we don't have it under any form right now.
And, and what I was trying to clarify was that it, it's a complicated process to get, uh, commercial, something switched from an airstrip to a commercial airport. And that's what the BLM said, that it's, you know, we don't have that. We don't have that. And it would be a long process. And that's where I suggested we get JAviation if the town is looking at that with the general plan and with, uh, general interest to have that developed into a commercial airport and to switch, you know, with the BLM and to switch our general plan is to get JAviation to do a feasibility study.
Right.
And JAviation is an engineering company that just focuses on, on airports and they would be the type that could do that for us if that's something that the town is interested in. And then they would tell us what we would need to do from there. But the, yeah, the BLM didn't give it to the town with that on its list of permissible activities.
Correct. And we honestly don't know what's, will be in the new lease. I mean, we can assume that's not going to be in there, but we don't know what the lease says since there isn't one yet.
Right, but it's, it's just a renewal of the lease. It's just a, a renewal that happens every 10 years and it's, it's just a renewal, so there shouldn't be any changes in it. But yeah, I guess you don't know till you actually have it in hand, but there shouldn't be changes.
Let's hope not. But until we see it, I can't represent that it's exactly like what we signed before. So, um, anything else from anyone on that? Okay, so the second part is we discussed, uh, revising the master fee schedule, which was Resolution Number 71, to include, uh, fee for partitions. So what was thrown out was $100, $200. Any further discussion about what you think is appropriate? Anybody have an idea?
Mayor, I think 200 is because it's a lot of work and, uh, I think the fees generally match how much work it is. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna say we should do it at $200.
I'll second.
Any further discussion?
We talked about making it 100 at the meeting just because it was less work than a land use clearance that has to do setbacks and, and plumbing and, you know, all the rest to, to make sure that it's in the right zone and where you're going to build something. It seemed like it was less work than that. So it was, 100 was proposed with Planning and Zoning, um, just to keep it, there's 200 for land use, 300 for, um, small subdivisions, 500 for large and so on.
You know, when you take into account the staff time that goes into it, I don't, I don't think that 200 is outrageous. I think that we've really, in some ways, if we take what actual staff time is, I think that, that the other fees are really more than reasonable. I don't have a problem with 200. And you know, maybe this is where we track a little bit of time and make those adjustments a year and see if they need to go up or down.
And maybe the other ones just need to be higher, but anyway, just a follow-up of what we talked this morning. I'm fine with it too.
Okay. Any further discussion? Then. Okay, so Brant, you made the motion?
Yes, ma'am.
And Sayers seconded.
Yeah.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? It's unanimous. Then number eight, we saw on the Utah League of Cities and Towns Annual Conference from last week and, and the takeaways. So why don't we start, Erin, if, why don't you tell you what you, tell them what you took away and tell us if you thought it was a valuable use of time.
All righty, well, I certainly appreciate the opportunity to attend. Um, some high-level focuses of the conference were on affordable housing, the subdivision regulations that were kind of pushed down from the state level. They had some resources, um, that we can really start digging into to help update our ordinance. A few of the workshops that I attended were Land Use 101, Budgeting for Smaller Cities and Towns, and a Communications Workshop, um, among others. And, you know, I think really, I, out of, you know, all the workshops and all the sessions, you know, you, you get a lot of helpful information, but I sincerely appreciated the opportunity to network with a lot of people from around the state. There are all kinds of cool programs. people from around the state. There are all kinds of cool programs that take place. So, Ann, Linda, and I also attended the Rural Leaders Breakfast, in which we got to talk to some other folks in very targeted rural areas. And they talked about this LAA program, Local Administrative Assistant?
Assistant.
Assistant, wherein we, then they're assigned by region. So for SULOG, we would have someone through SULOG. But this LAA position is able to provide resources, administrative resources, to smaller towns. Usually, they focus on towns that don't necessarily have, like, a town manager or a whole lot of paid staff. But we were able to get actually quite a lot of face time with our representative. She's very new in the role. Her name is Christina. What's, what's Christina's last name?
Watkins.
Watkins. But we got a lot of face time with her. We shared quite a lot of information about some of the issues that Bluff is, is dealing with specifically, and she vowed that, you know, she, she wants to attend our meetings. And we've, we've already kind of reached out, Ann's already reached out to, to connect with her. But, you know, having this opportunity to network with people all around the state is incredibly helpful. And then we also, you know, are, are right there with everyone as they're learning about these new programs and opportunities. It's also on the agenda here today, but there was a specific panel regarding rural funding and all of the programs that are available for rural funding. And so, you know, this was just a really great one-stop-shop to get quite a lot of information and quite a lot of resources. I do think an overarching, you know, the overarching themes of the conference, what I picked up is, whether you're on the Wasatch Front or in rural Utah, we're all dealing with really major issues. But the, the solace in it is that we're all dealing with similar issues. And so it was a good, good way to, to connect with folks. So that, that was my takeaway.
Linda, did you have anything you wanted to talk about or add?
I thought it was really useful. And there was a lot about housing. There were a lot of choices to go to that were rural, which is helpful, because the year before it seemed more urban. And, and you also find out little interesting pieces of information that improve how you do things, change how you do things. And so one of the things that I found out was that when we have a closed meeting, if one of the council members isn't there, we can't tell them what we talked about. Because in closed meetings, you're not supposed to tell anyone what you talked about. And we can't even tell a council member that was, just wasn't present. So that was pretty interesting. Actually, in the, in the workshop I was in for that one, we were all surprised. So, but it was really helpful.
So, a couple of things, as Erin said, there's an agenda item down at number 12 that I'll just hold off on talking about the rural funding. But that panel was really very, very helpful. The networking was really good. Representative Watkins, who is with SULOG now, she was pretty lively. She had a lot of energy and is very interested in providing support to her district, which would be the southern, southeastern Utah local government districts, which we're a part of. The other part of it is, I think we could just vote to let our manager go, because now we'll get all this free local management that they're offering. But if we have a full-time manager, it's more limited. And actually, we clarified that, because we were all like, huh? So, one piece that we know we'll be able to use them for, asking questions, clarifying things, continued work on the, any revisions with zoning or, or general plans, particularly grant writing. She, Christina Meyer is taking, or Watkins, Christine Watkins is taking a grant writing course, and she'll be able to provide grant writing support. We also talked to them about, Jay Powell was there and Jerry Gamber, talked about being able to get, even at this point, not just grant writing, but we really are going to need grant implementation support if we are fortunate enough to get that million-dollar grant. And even for the three we've got right now, it would be really nice to get some support on the administrative piece. So, that went quite well. We had dinner with Bob and Gwen Springmeyer the second night, and we were able to introduce Erin to, in particular, to Bob, because he's continued to provide support to us at no charge. So I think it was really important to catch up with them and see where they are. And Bob is still, you know, working away full-time, so that's good. That's to our benefit. I think the biggest takeaway that I had is the reminder that we have a couple of seats on this legislative panel that we've not identified people to go to. When it's not the session, it's, I think, once a month. And then when, when the legislature is in session, it's every Monday. And it's run through the league, and you get your number of seats based on population. My recollection from last year is, I thought it was three. Erin talked to them, it's two. I think it probably is two, three sounded like a lot last year, and I think it was just either misspoken or misheard by me. But I'd like to follow up on it, and the first meeting is in September. But I'd like everyone to think about who would be willing to do this. It's on Mondays, I believe, and I'll get more information out. But I think we should do it, because it involves listening to, helping have input and voting within the league on proposed legislation, and local government is under attack. I mean, that's just a given. That's not a, a judgment. That is what's happening. We're losing local control. And if we want to have a voice at the table, we do need to get two reps there. So, I'll gather more information about that. Anything, questions?
Thank you, guys, for going. Those conferences, I haven't been to a Utah conference, but I went to several in North Carolina, and they're fantastic for networking. And I know you guys were stars there for our little town. So, thank you, thank you.
All right. If there's nothing further, then we'll move to the update on the fire suppression grant from the USDA, United States Department of Agriculture. While I was in Salt Lake, right before I left, the paperwork came in to sign on the fire suppression grant. And the bottom line, it was just the e-signature things were not working. So I just walked over to the USDA and signed everything. And then I got an email, today is Tuesday, Monday, I believe, from Mary Navarro, who is the USDA contact that we received the grant through. And she reminded me, our SAM's number will be coming up October 13th, so we need to renew that. I think that made her a little nervous that it was a month away, but it's pretty easy to do. We just have to update it. And we'll work with Erin so that we get that done in the next week. Any questions about the grant? Just a reminder, it is for fire suppression materials, so it can't be used for other things. All right, then, if there's nothing else on that, we'll go to number 11, which is the meeting with Sheriff Lee High Lacy yesterday that Erin and I had. And I had been planning on reaching out to him much, much earlier than now, but I just hadn't gotten to it. So he came down to us, and we met for, I don't know, 45 minutes, an hour. Part of the impetus was this nagging concern about the eclipse. And I, you know, we sit in on the Salmon County solar eclipse meetings. I sit on the law enforcement peace committee. So we've got a lot of information, but I felt it was really important that we tell the sheriff that we support all the work they're doing here. We know this is causing extra work for them. It's nothing any of us can control, but is there anything we should be doing, shouldn't be doing? How do we help? And it was a really good conversation, which led into, you know, a couple of other areas. But the primary focus was talking about the eclipse, and then the marathon that's after that, coming down Cow Canyon, and how that's all going to work. We, Erin offered that when we get the map kind of laid out in a final form for the, the eclipse, like where the barricades will be, he was, seemed very happy that we were actually going to barricade some of our internal roads, so that things don't pile up in the inside of town with all kinds of cars and traffic jams, more so than we'll already have on the main road. But he seemed very, unlike a couple of times when I said we were expecting lots of people, people will kind of laugh. Well, he's taking it very seriously. All of his officers will be on duty. He's coordinating with the law, other law enforcement people. And then, Erin, why don't you cover the piece that he, he raised about the dedicated law enforcement piece?
Yeah. So as Ann mentioned, we, we had our own concerns about these two events, occurrences taking place. I think both of them are kind of occurrences. It's kind of happening to us for both of these. But he, he brought up, Sheriff Lacy brought up the, the idea that, you know, would, would Bluff be interested in some proactive sheriff presence on a contractual basis or some kind of agreement basis? And, you know, we said that, yes, we've been working on a strategic plan, which does outline a need for enforcement, that, you know, there are multiple tiers to enforcement. We'll have, you know, some stuff at very local level, community level, potentially looking at, you know, even a justice court down the line. But in the interim, Sheriff Lacy is going to talk to some other communities, talk to some other counties about kind of what their agreements, what agreements are in place to perhaps kind of use as a template. And then we could start dialing in on, you know, what exactly does Bluff need? Is it, you know, certain days of the week or a certain timeframe? And so none of this is in, you know, none of this is, is written in stone, but I certainly appreciated, you know, his forward-looking. And, and he was aware that, you know, we're, we're working on the strategic plan. We know enforcement is an area in which we can, you know, we have some, some opportunities. And so he, he's going to start, start that legwork to just kind of see what's out there. And then, you know, we, we can provide a lot of guidance as to what, what we think we need in this area. So I was really heartened that he would, you know, bring that up and, and knows that it's an area that we are going to be focused on in the coming years.
It was interesting, too, that he, that Sheriff Lacy raised a couple of things that we, we've talked about was, first, they, of course, will continue to provide services to us when there's a need. But we had a little bit of a discussion between, about the civil aspect of it, you know, what, what should they really be providing? Does it involve getting phone calls to dispatch at 4:00 AM to talk about a barking dog, or a property line dispute, or whatever? And so we talked about that. And then he raised on his own that he thought one thing we could explore would be using some kind of mediation service. And we told him that we had, that was in our strategic plan to look at, doing some mediation, rather than just having to go straight to a justice court and finding people, trying to work out the disagreements. And then he talked about Moab, I, no, Durango. Was it Durango that has the civil, the, the regular people on the street that wear a little vest, and they are volunteers who work for the community, say, oh, you know, there was a fender bender over here, rather than calling the police, we can help you fill out the report and exchange the information. And he said they really use that, they have this whole process in Durango, which I thought was interesting and be good to, to check it out. But overall, he was, Sheriff Lacy was very supportive, very open to discussing anything we want to talk about. And anytime we want him to come back down, he'll, he'll certainly do that. So I felt very encouraged that he's, you know, really paying attention. And like he said, he's very familiar with Bluff, and he knows a lot of people in Bluff because he, he was here. So, yeah, so it was good. Any thoughts, any questions?
No, but thank you for, for meeting with him and, and continuing our good relationship with the Sheriff's Department. Wonderful.
Well, I do think it's, it's important that we follow up with our strategic plan and start putting some of these things in place. And there are some steps we can take that are not costly. And he indicated, I think, if I remember this right, Erin, and if I'm making it up, tell me, I think he indicated that he talked with some officers on his staff that, that might be interested in helping out down the road. So, I think we're, we're in good shape with the Sheriff's Department. Then if there's no other questions or anything on that, we can move to the discussion of the Utah League Cities and Towns Panel Discussion on Rural Roundup Funding Opportunities in Rural Utah, Grant Opportunities and Deadlines. Then, like I said, there was a panel of four or five people. They came from all different divisions. One was, the one that I want to mention specifically is the Division of Drinking Water. There, according to the person from the Division of Drinking Water, there is a deadline of, I thought it was October 31st. They just said October 2024. But when I did the research online, it's October 16th, 2024. His name is Tim Davis. And then there was James Dixon from the Governor's Office Economic Opportunity. And the mandate is, I understand it, is that pipes that have lead and copper, in December 2021, the EPA identified steps over the next few years to reduce lead in drinking water. The lead and copper rule revisions going to affect October 16th, 2024, which essentially, breaking it down, my understanding is that you need to have an inventory of pipes. If they were before a certain time, a certain date, they're deemed to be lead or whatever. If they're, if you don't know up to that point, then they are deemed to be that until you prove otherwise. And after a certain point, they know that there's no lead in them. So then the next part of this rule will require infrastructure replacement. So, the, the Governor's Office procured the services of Sunrise Engineering for towns of 10,000 or less people to provide grant opportunities for it. There were two different types of grants. One's an expedited, which doesn't really mean expedited in terms of speed to get this done. It's expedited in terms of they're pushing the money out, and there's a limited amount of funding. Then there's another type of grant that you can apply for. Keeping in mind that this is a huge conference, we went to Sunrise and talked to them, because they have a booth there. They conferred with the Division of Drinking Water, and at this point, neither the town nor Bluff Water Works is on the list for the grant. So believing in no harm, no foul, I put in the information for our pipes with BWW. And by the time we got in the car, then the next day, my intent was to talk to Marx Powell over the weekend. But by the time we got in the car on Friday, Marx already knew about it. And he was curious as to why I'd put our name out there. And I said, because as I understand it, it's a mandate. Marx has a little different take on it. BWW had received a letter some time ago telling them about this new rule. And he had, Marx had talked with Benny Musselman, and they want to tie the inventory up with the infrastructure, as I understand the conversation, so that there's one big grant opportunity. That's a point of clarification. I don't know that, I felt like it was a two-phase process. One, these grants were to do the inventory and make the determination as to what needs to be replaced, and that further down the road, there'll be more grant opportunities. But that's something we can explore. And if it's some other way, we can always take the name, our name off the list. It's not costing us. costing us money. It's not costing us work. And it's not costing us time. So tomorrow night is a Bluff Water Works meeting. And I'm planning on talking a little more detail with Marx before the meeting, just to see where we have differences of thinking. And then, I don't know if it'll be an agenda item on their agenda or not. It's, I haven't seen it yet. So anyway, that, that's, that was the one big thing that to me was interesting. Michelle Weaver from USDA was there and announced that she, that USDA had given Bluff a grant for fire suppression materials, $50,000. And she livened up the panel quite a bit. So Linda, Erin, comments, anything you want to add?
No, I think that was a pretty, pretty good synopsis. There is, there is going to be a portal, or I should say, there is a portal that is collecting all of the state grant opportunities. And so I visited that yesterday. And it does seem like a fairly user-friendly portal where you can dive in and look. There are filters to, you know, local level, state level. And then they're putting some federal grants on there, too. So a nice, a nice resource to utilize as we continue to look for funding opportunities for a lot of our major projects. There were quite a few at the local level. I'd say a couple dozen already listed on the website. But we've been assured that that's a portal, a resource that, that will, will be out there. Pros and cons, there were however many other cities and towns who also heard about this resource at the same time. But perhaps we can visit that a little bit more often to see some additional funding opportunities that might be available to us.
Linda, anything?
I didn't attend that. So I'm really happy to hear all the detail. I was in a different session. So, but since then, I've heard it a couple of times in the car. And now, so, and it's good.
Questions, thoughts?
I think it's good. We got our name on that list for consideration. So thank you for, thank you for doing that.
Well, and like I told Marx Powell, you know, we can pull our name off. It's not going to hurt us to be on there. What I, my concern was, and I think it was Erin's as well, when you use the word limited amount of funding, first come, first served, you want to get in there. And if we don't need to do it this way, that's great. But the mandate is there. That's definite. That is, and one last piece on that mandate, according to the Division of Drinking Water, if you don't have that inventory completed by the due date in 2024, you will be, your agency or municipality will be fined every day by the EPA that you don't have it. And so if you wait till the end of the period and there's no funding, or there's so many people Sunrise can't get to it, you've got to hire your own folks and pay out of pocket, or start paying a fine. And I'm imagining the EPA fines pretty heftily. So.
No, you did the right thing, Mayor. I, I fully agree with that. I just, you know, when you have that opportunity, it's, it's easy to take advantage of it. And I think that's what we need to do. We need to get this done. Thank you.
And until we have that inventory, they may have a lot of it inventoried. But until we know that that's in existence and proven, then, then I think that's smart to get, get ready to do it. Hopefully, they have a lot of it done. But.
And, and Marx emphasized, you know, that they do test regularly for all these things. And, which is great. But the testing and the inventory are separate and, and the infrastructure. So we've got lots of time to explore it. Sunrise representatives said that this is not, we are not going to get called in the next couple of months to do this. It's going to be, they've got a list started already. So.
Well, that's good.
Yep. Well, if there's nothing further on that, does anybody have an other, other?
I, I do. Today on Ryan, let's see, through Ryan Benali to Killian Bailey of the Canyon Country Discovery Center, we have gotten the award to do the giant cane removal from the Clean Energy folks of landing. So we just found out today, but it's to do that removal of giant cane. So it will be through this next year is what it looks like. He's going to study up the grant a little more and find the dates and things. But what we need to do is get the word out that the, the giant cane, some people call it bamboo, arundo, it's got a few different names, but that needs to go, whether you like it or, or not, it has to go. It's a state law. And so if you want help removing it, there'll be a team in, they'll, they'll have this grant pays for a team of, of kids, youth corps that will be here for about a week. And so keep your eyes open for that. And if you want help, they can help. It'll be a cut and spray. And otherwise, you can dig it out. You can hire people to dig it out, or, or, you know, whatever. But, but it will need to be eradicated. It's on the high priority to eradicate. So anyway, that will be coming up.
Good job, Lou, because I thought I'd seen that when the list first came out. And then it looked like from when you're talking to them that we didn't get it. So thank you. That did work.
No, we didn't, we didn't get it on the first round or whatever. But Ryan Benali sent that from them just today. So somebody either dropped out and said they couldn't do the project and we got their spot or something. But anyway, that's, that'll be helpful. But anyway, there'll be more to come on that.
Great.
You're good. Thanks.
Anybody else with another?
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second Jeb's motion.
At 6:57 PM, all in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Okay, I'm turning off the recorder and.